Good evening, welcome to the Line Board of Education Special Meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Merkley.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Present.
Mr. Medio.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Ms. Spinelli.
Here.
Mr. Olrich.
Present.
Mr. English.
Here.
We have come.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineyard Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda etc., the Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Nuextra Comunidad, Visto Bueno, the Clerk of the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, I'd like to call up the, um, we have Wallace tonight, is that who it is? Wallace students come up to lead us in the flag salute. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we have certificates, Ms. Spinelli will be handing them out. Along with Mr. Costa. Thank you very much. At this time, we will be taking public comment on agenda items, continued from our public hearing on the budget. If anyone would like to speak, please limit your discussion to five minutes.
The current sheets are for the next combined meeting, um, so I don't have any yellow sheets for this, uh, this public comment, however, the board president did open it up for public comments, uh, on the budget.
Yes, hello.
Joe's guy. Hi, my name is Crystal, uh, Crystal Vilger, I'm a Vineland resident. I also work for Insight, um, and I've been with them for about a year and a half now.
Excuse, excuse me, that, that piece of the comment is for the next agenda.
Okay, they told us to come up now, sorry.
This is, yeah, this is the special meeting on the budget only. Sorry. Okay, seeing none, do we have any discussion of any budget amended, proposed by the board, amendments proposed by the board at this time? Seeing none, now superintendent recommendations for approval to the board.
I would like to recommend approval of the 2019-20 school district budget for submission to the state and New Jersey Department of Education as follows. General budget, $167,101,367, with a tax levy of $24,703,562. Special revenue, $25,166,292, and it will come to a total of $192,267,659, with a local tax levy, levy, excuse me, of $24,703,562.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Bob, can we combine A and B there, since I just read it that way? Okay.
Any questions or comments on B?
Okay, Ken, I'd like to recommend approval of the maximum travel amount in accordance with NJAC 6A colon 23A dash 7.3 for the 2019-20 school district budget, an amount of $26,853. The travel amount spent to date in the 1819 budget is $11,954.
Do I have any questions or comments? Seeing none?
I'd like to recommend approval of A, B, and C.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Can I have a roll call please, Mr. Merkley?
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Upstain.
Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Olrich.
Yes.
Mr. English.
Yes, and a quick comment, um, I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone who worked on this rather large stressful $14 million shortfall process. Even in the 11th hour, um, the board was still throwing things at central administration's way, and, um, we received, as we like to use that word, flexibility, we did receive an email this morning from Dr. Brucio and the team, um, with some additional flexibility that, um, showed really working together at this process, and we all understood that number, the size of it, and what it entailed, and we would have loved to save a lot of other things, but at this time, showing by this vote, it, it appears that we all seem to, um, be happy with the flexibility, and again, thank you to everyone, because again, I know that this was not one of the easier years in recent memory, so, um, with that being said, I vote yes, and that is it. At this time, we have public comment on any item, but really, the insight piece saved for our meeting, because that's part of that agenda. Okay? Does anyone have any comment on anything budget related or something generic, I guess? Seeing none, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The board's gonna go for a short recess, and, um, we will be back shortly for our six o'clock start, okay? Thank you.
Please everyone, get seated so we can continue. Thank you. Welcome to our May 1 Violent Board of Education Combined Meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Merkley. Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Fioki.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Medio.
Here.
Mr. Shabrana.
Present.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Ms. Spinelli.
Present.
Mr. Ulrich.
Present.
Mr. English.
Here.
We have a quorum. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violent Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Nuextra Comunidad, Visto Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which was founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Merkley, do you have a resolution for executive session this evening? No, we do not. Alrighty, that's a good thing. Dr. Gruccio, special presentations this evening.
Yes, we have several, and I'd like to begin by calling forward Ms. Kristen Speakman, our Assistant Principal at Many's, and she will be recognizing one of our teachers who received the Phillies All-Star Teacher Award.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Gruccio, and members of the Board of Education, for allowing us to recognize Mr. Chris Hannah and Cole the Deaf Dog. If you haven't met Cole, he's here, but Cole's famous around Vineland. Selected from several hundred nominees, Chris was named a Phillies All-Star Teacher. Wendy O'Donnell, the social worker at Many's School, took the time to nominate Chris for the award due to his dedication to our students and the community. Chris is the Many's music teacher, but he does so much more than teach music. Along with Cole, our official Many's and Vineland Public Schools Therapy Dog, Chris works with our students on promoting acceptance. Chris and Cole work with individual students, groups of students, even classes of students, some of whom are just having a bad day, struggling academically, or are just having a tough time and need a little cheering up. Sometimes even the staff needs some cheering up, and it works. Chris's dedication extends beyond Many's School. Chris and Cole have dedicated many hours, over 250 hours to be exact, to the Veterans Memorial Home in Vineland. Cole was even just named the official mascot of the Veterans Memorial Home. I would also like to add, I personally nominated Chris to receive a Giving Joy Award from Norwegian Cruise Line. It was a big Facebook campaign. Voters, votes were given to deserving teachers via Facebook. Over 45,000 teachers were nominated across the country, and 1.5 million votes were cast. Chris made it as a finalist to a group of 60. But, the catch was, Chris would have to appear Friday night, this Friday night, at an award ceremony in Seattle, which is the same night as the Phillies All-Star Game. Well, he had to forfeit the free cruise, and it's a good thing Chris loves the Phillies, because he's giving up a free cruise. But we're very proud to have Chris Hannah, along with Cole, represent Dr. William Many's School and also the Vineland Public Schools Friday night at Citizens Bank Park on the field, where we have probably about 70 Many's many friends going. So it'll be an exciting night for Vineland. Thank you.
Chris, we have a certificate for Cole also, so if you would just wait right there. Thank you, Chris. Next, I'd like to call up Mrs. Jennifer Federico, Principal of Petway School, and she will be recognizing one of her teachers who received the NJA Philadelphia Soul Teacher Award.
Good evening, Dr. Gruccio, Mr. English, and Board members. Mrs. Mongaluso and I are so proud to be here tonight to recognize Ms. Jen Pillow-Martin as an NJEA VIP Teacher. She was recognized this past weekend at a Philadelphia Souls game. Jen is a third grade teacher at Petway and was nominated by one of her colleagues for this honor. Jen is a role model for her students in determination and service. She connects lessons to students' daily lives and helps provide them with the most educational opportunities possible. She is involved in all aspects of Petway School and demonstrates her dedication each and every day. We thank her for all she does and congratulate her on receiving this distinction.
Congratulations, Jen. Our next presentation is by Mrs. Mary DiMarco, a teacher at Vinland High School, and she will be talking about educational opportunities for our students to go to Japan.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Gruccio and the Board for having me here, and I'd also like to thank you for your support for our European Adventure 2019, which we just returned with 11 VHS students from a 12-day, three-country European adventure. We just got back Monday night, and I thank you for your support of that from last year. When, I went to training with EF Educational Tours in October, and I met 45 other teachers that have done up to 15, 20 tours already. So when I came home, I polled all my students. I asked them, "If you could go to any country in the world, where would you like to go?" And the overwhelming majority of them said, "Japan." So I said, "Okay, why not?" So, that's what we are going to be doing in, and I hope you've had a chance to look at the PowerPoint presentation. It is linked to your agenda. I'm not going to go through each slide, but you might want to look at it. There are some pictures there from our trip that we just completed, and there's information on where we are traveling next. So our trip is called Japan: House of the Rising Sun, and we are planning to go over spring break of 2020. So, we may not even need any excused absences. It just depends on, you know, how it falls. So what I'm here tonight is asking for excused absences for our students and school business days for our teacher chaperones. And I'm also asking for any training that I get the opportunity to do again for an excused absence. That's usually, I mean, a school business day, and that's usually around a weekend, Columbus weekend, so it's one day. And, that's really all I have to ask. Did you get a chance to see the PowerPoint? Okay, so...
Yeah, we didn't see...
Do you have any questions for me?
We were hoping you were going to take a volunteer board member to come along with you.
No, but you can pay and go. The next meeting is May 15th. If anybody wants to go to Japan, 6 o'clock in the VHS North Media Center.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. English and Mr. Fran Japani if they would please help us, and we are going to be recognizing all of our Governor Teacher of the Year awardees as well as Educational Services Professionals for this school year.
Good evening, everyone. It's always my honor and privilege to announce the names of our nominees and award winners for Teacher of the Year and Educational Service Professional. Each person was nominated by their school staff, and the award will be given tonight. When the awardee comes up, please stop and see Dr. Gruccio first, and then the President of the Board, Mr. English, and please line up in front of the stage for a group picture. Okay, we'll begin with the Barcy School for Teacher of the Year. Mr. Peter Mariadis, a fourth grade teacher for 21 years. Congratulations. Our Educational Service Professional from Barcy, Elaine Lutz, our professional for 26 years. Congratulations. From the DePaulito School, Denise Lachey, third grade teacher, 16 years. Congratulations. Our Educational Service Professional, Carmina LaPristi, a nurse for 11 years in our district. Congratulations. From the Delago School, Stephanie Haynes, pre-K, nine years in our district. Our Educational Service Professional, Diane Barazin, a nurse in our district. I'm sorry, did I call her? Congratulations. From the Duran School, Lauren Koya, fifth grade teacher, 10 years. Are you still here? Our Educational Service Professional, Anita English, instructional assistant for the past 10 years. Congratulations. From the Johnstone School, Teacher of the Year, Elaine Love, math teacher for the past 18 years. Congratulations. From the Pillow School, Renee Carfagno, social studies teacher for the past 19 years. Our Educational Service Professional from the Pillow School is Ryan Soupy, a guidance counselor for the past 14 years. From the Many's School, Lucine Prado, second grade teacher. Our Educational Service Professional, Danielle Burns, basic skills for the past 24 years. From Petway Elementary, Teacher of the Year, Victoria Coffenberger, teacher for the past 16 years. Our Educational Professional, Rhonda Nockenmeyer, instructional assistant for the past four years. Congratulations. From Rossi Elementary, Megan Bernhardt, fifth grade teacher for 13 years. Our Educational Service Professional, Jane Bissetti, instructional assistant for the past 21 years. From Sabater Elementary, our Teacher of the Year, Dana Martino, first grade teacher, 20 years. Congratulations. Our Educational Service Professional, Rosita Harris, instructional assistant, 18 years. Congratulations. How to help her? From Vineland High School, Donna Garrett, math teacher. Congratulations, congratulations, Donna. Our Educational Service Provider from the high school, Kathleen McCabe, social worker. Congratulations, congratulations. From Memorial Middle School, Emily Diaz Shard, science teacher, 13 years. Our Educational Service Professional from Memorial, Lauren Figueroa, 19 years. From Wallace Middle, Catherine Checkley, 6th and 8th grade physical education teacher for the last 14 years. Our Educational Service Professional, April Ward, 23 years. Congratulations. From Winslow, our Teacher of the Year is Kara Rem, art teacher for the past 15 years. Congratulations. Congratulations. Our Educational Service Professional, Josephine Rodriguez, instructional assistant for the past 20 years. Seven round applause for all our winners this year.
Is this on?
Yes.
Uh, while waiting.
She's up to do it right now.
I'd love her. Uh, want me to grab Stephanie's?
Please, yeah, go under the...
It's really hard for her. She says she'll be here without.
I'd just like to take a moment. I know many of you are leaving, but I want to recognize all of our teachers and paraprofessionals that were just honored. These are the people that truly make a difference day in and day out for our children. They're the ones that spend the day with them, and the things that they say to them and how they treat them is what truly makes a difference for each of our children. So I just want to thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for the job that you do, and I'm very proud to have you in the Vinland Public School District.
Do we have any questions on the HIB report or comments? Seeing none at this time, the approval of the minutes. March 13th, it needs a correction, so we will only be approving April 3, 2019 combined meeting this evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please. Mr. Costa.
I'm going to abstain from the April 3 meeting and also with respect to the March 13...
We're not voting on it. We're not voting on it. So abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Pennelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any public meeting report from our board solicitor this evening?
None.
At this time, public comment on agenda items. Yes, I have yellow forms filled out by Crystal Belger. As you come up, just please state your name, and you have 5 minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Crystal Belger. I'm a Vinland resident, and I'm also a one-on-one aide through Insight in an autistic self-contained classroom. I know that when making decisions, finances make, play a big part in that. However, I ask you to consider the ones who will suffer the most in the situation that we're facing, which would be the children. They thrive on consistency, and changes that are being proposed would, could cause dramatic regression, and we've worked so hard for our students to keep them growing and learning. I plan on returning to my position for the 2019-2020 school year, so I ask you to consider what it's worth and what price we're willing to pay to sacrifice the well-being and wonderful education of our students. Before you make a drastic decision, please do research and consider all outcomes and see what the best outcome for our students would be before you make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Lisa Sanchez. Next, I have Diane Garrity.
Garrity. My name's Diane Garrity. I've been with Insight since 2016. I would like to say I've never heard any good things about Source for Teachers, and that's going back like 10 years. I've had several friends work for them, never seems to work out. There seems to be issues between children and people that work for them, so I would not be willing to go to Source for Teachers. I happen to work in the same classroom as Crystal. We are with the autistic population. They do not do well with change. They are much better with the people that they see every day who are willing to help them and deal with their personal needs. And their personal needs are not always things you would think about. Some of them need toileting assistance. I had a child I was with last year, the only reason I'm not with her this year is I did not speak Spanish. She needed assistance with catheterization. Not every person can handle these things. And Insight, if I was not willing to continue, would have found another person willing to work with that child in the area that needed to be taken care of. So some of these kids, you just need to take into consideration, for a couple of bucks, Insight has your back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Tiffany Harold.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a paraprofessional at Sargent Dominic Pillar Middle School. I've been there for five years now. I started out at Vinland Board of Ed, and it was transitioned over to Insight. I just want to speak a little bit on, if you do a quick Google search on Source for Teachers, who now calls themselves ESS because of their terrible reputation, Source for Teachers cannot be trusted with the education and welfare of our children. Bridgestone replaced Source for Teachers two years ago with Insight. They hired a substitute in Bridgeport, Connecticut on a do-not-hire list who then went on to repeatedly sexually assault a student. This decision could not be about money. It should be about the kids. I work in a self-contained class. I stay with these kids for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. This year currently, my students are in 7th grade. We only have one chance to get this correct. I'm asking, please, come sit in my class for at least a half a day, see how I am with them, and then sit in there when someone else is in there, because they do know most of the Insight employees, and see the huge change in them. I've been with these kids for 6th, and like I said, now 7th grade, and will be there for 8th grade. And trust me when I say they do not do good with change, and they will regress instead of continuing to be the best self-contained student due to their teacher and assistant that spends all day with them for the three years that they are in middle school. So we ask you to please reconsider your decision and keep us Insight as your contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all the forms I have for tonight. Dr. Rossi, I would ask that you come to the podium just, can you address the board in the stands a little bit more about this transition?
Sure. While we understand, and we've talked about many times in this room and in the office of Dr. Gruccio, the financial concerns we have, I would assure the individuals that spoke and everyone who has been successful and dedicated as a substitute worker that they are indeed welcome, and we are eager to have them back. The vendor, if it were to be voted upon this evening favorably, would not affect the employees that we would like to have back who work for that vendor. It is simply a matter of trying, as was said, to try to be conservative financially. It is a one-year commitment. If it is not successful, and it will certainly be evaluated and monitored, the vendor has promised an onsite individual in my area, and I can assure the people who work for Insight, and I have a lot of respect for Insight, they've done a great job, that anyone working there is indeed welcome, and we would ask please return. There will not be a pay decrease in this event. The savings is from the vendor fee.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Which committee did this go through? Which board committee I'm talking?
Yeah, it was a bid. It was RFP.
So it wasn't discussed in finance or... Now, none? Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Medio?
What's the approximate projected savings?
It's a six-figure savings.
All right. Let me put it another way. Is this a six-figure savings that's gonna, it's already in this budget, and we're gonna cut out that six figures? It's gonna be, for instance, if the number was, if we've budgeted $6 million, it's gonna be $5 million it's gonna cost us, so we're saving a million?
We knew at the time the budget was built that we were putting it out and that we would realize the savings, so maybe not as high, but there is a savings built into it.
All right. Thanks.
Do we have anyone else with public comment? On agenda? Items. Did you fill out your form, young lady?
I forgot.
Don't forget to.
Vicki Miller, I'm going to talk about Insight. About three years ago, me and Mr. Rossi had words on Insight. I didn't believe in privatization, and he said it was a cost. They'd be saving money. You're in a bigger financial problem now. How are you saving money? Insight does, I hear it's because they don't come to work, no matter if they're in Vinland Public School System or in Insight. They're not going to come to work if they're people that don't come to work. That's, Insight should be taking care of that. But Insight does offer jobs to people all over. I wish you would consider it. Thank you.
Seeing none, Dr. Guccio, motions and resolutions and recommendations?
I would like to recommend discussion of the following: retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment transfers, student substitutes, extracurricular activities, and extracurricular summer work.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the following annual appointments: Board Secretary, Custodian of School District Records, Custodian of School Monies, Scott Mustaral to fill the following roles when needed in the absence of Mr. Merkley, Board Secretary, Custodian of School District Records, Contracting Agent, and Transfer Investment of Funds and Authorized District Depositories.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion of the various mandated appointments, as you see listed E through W.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the appointment of Mr. Merkley as the district qualified purchasing agent, and to establish the bid threshold at the amount pursuant to NJSA 18A:18A-3A, and any increase authorized in NJSA 18A:18A-3B.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the appointment of Mr. Merkley as the district qualified purchasing agent, and to establish the bid threshold at the amount pursuant to NJSA 18A:18A-3A, and any increase authorized in NJSA 18A:18A-3B.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the Vineland Board of Education and the Vineland Education Association, retroactive to July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of items 1.1 through 1.4.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I would like to, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
For the record, he stepped out.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spennelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
They pass.
I'd like to recommend discussion of approval of trips and district travel.
Any questions or comments? I just have a quick question for Mr. Merkley on just pretty much our trip and our travel. I had a little discussion with Ms. Spennelli and Mr. Ulrich. When I look at these, I see the different funding, and it's a little confusing for me, and I see some numbers, then I see PTO funding, then I see like an AMSA Academy account, AMSA Activities, Activity Funds, Students Pay/Fundraising, different things like that. And I guess, what kind of got my attention, when I looked at the first one, it says Barcy, the event is Wallace Middle School. The purpose is to tour the middle school, where they would be going next. And there's a charge for $158.35, which I understand is the charge for the bus, correct?
That sounds correct.
That sounds correct. Just in the future, we just, I can't imagine that we can't afford to pay for that bus, so...
Yeah, that's something I'll look into for you.
I appreciate that big time. Does anyone have anything to add to that?
I know throughout the years, it's been a line item that wasn't taken from the Activity Funds and the PTO Funds for the district travel, and honestly, to have a charge from Wallace School to Memorial School is ludicrous, you know. I just think that we, the parents are being asked to pay for a lot of things, so they're raising money, which is great. PTOs are doing a great job, PTA, PTOs are doing a great job, but should we really be charging for our own district busing? And we need to come up with a better solution than having that money go towards the busing of their event, and it should go to maybe having a better event, or having more kids eligible, or something along those lines. So I would move forward that we need to relook at charging our PTOs busing for our own district activities.
Agreed, and as Mr. Merkley said, you know, that's something that he's looking into, and I just do want to thank Ms. Spennelli for really initiating me looking into that. I do appreciate that. So, any more questions or comments with this?
I'd like to recommend approval of trips and district travel.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spennelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
They passes.
I would like to recommend discussion of budgetary transfers from our general school based in ECPA budgets for the month of March 2019.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the Board Secretary and Treasurer reports for March 2019.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the placement of special education students.
Questions or comments? Mr. Medio?
Can you give me a rough figure for the added district placement tuitions that we pay this year?
Terry, are you able to answer that?
I would give the information to you. It's about $3 million, I think.
How much?
$3 million.
I still didn't hear you.
$3 million.
$3 million?
About, she said.
Right. I'll confirm it tomorrow.
Is it the same number that's on our agenda? Is it on that? It looks like it is.
It's on the attachment?
It's on the attachment, right.
The bottom line item should be what we're currently at.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the submission of the following grant applications: New Jersey Child Assault Prevention Program 2019-20, New Jersey Teen Child Assault Prevention Program 1920, and New Jersey Special Needs Child Assault Prevention Program 2019-20.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion to accept the following funding: Field Trip New Jersey Grant for Vineland High School, the amount of $700, New Jersey School Insurance Group 2019 Safety Grant, the amount of $70,099.97.
Any questions or comments? I do have just a quick question. When you see a New Jersey School Insurance Group 2019 Safety Grant, where does that grant go?
That's a grant that's basically given back to the districts who participate for items identified for safety. The grant goes to them, and they would have to approve it, but it's typically used for anything that's safety. I've seen it used for leveling concrete on sidewalks that's uneven, replacing potholes in pavement, security cameras is a big thing, door hardware is a big thing, playground equipment's a big thing. It can be used for anything like that.
Thank you. It's a nice chunk of change, so thank you.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution appointing the following bank depositories for business checking, saving, and investments: The Athletic Department Petty Cash Fund, Athletic Fund, Budgetary Payroll Agency, Food Service, Payroll, Unemployment Trust Fund, and the Flex Spending and Capital Reserve.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of a resolution recognizing the collective bargaining units.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution appointing the legal depositaries for school district funds.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution appointing our official newspapers.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution that will allow private schools to provide free nutritional breakfast and/or lunch for students with disabilities.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the school nutrition program, Vendent Meals Contract, between Creative Achievement Academy, LLC, and the Vineland Board of Education, July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a resolution authorizing the contract agent to enter into the tuition agreements for the homeless students, 2019-2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional service agreement with Kaleidoscope Education Services for the related services of speech therapy, physical therapy, and occupational therapy, from July 1, 2019 till June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the partnership agreement between Big Brothers Big Sisters of Cumberland and Salem Counties and the Vineland Board of Education for school-based mentoring, an amount of $12,000.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the tuition contract between the Vineland Board of Education and Cape May County Technical School for two full-time students, the amount of $4,846.38 per month, from September 2019 to June 2020.
Questions or comments? Just a quick question. What kind of students are these, Mr. Merkley? Do we know?
Without looking at it, I would assume they're students that are attending a vocational school for a program that's not offered in county.
Okay.
Just like, I think at the last meeting, we approved Salem, and most of those Salem students were going for visual arts, visual and performing arts.
And am I right reading this in the amount of, that's per month?
Which one are you looking at?
Are you looking at the right one here?
4.15.
Two full times.
4,846 dollars per month.
And how many months is that?
10.
Okay. Thank you.
Plus busing, correct?
Yeah, that would be correct. If you look at the contract, you'll see the breakdown on it. At the end of the contract, it shows you with the total and then the monthly payments.
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding the tuition contracts between Cumberland County Technical Education Center and the Vineland Board of Education for the 1920 school year, and the following amounts: Full-time students, $6,282 per student, full-time special ed, $7,219 per student, and Strive students, $14,500 per student.
Questions or comments? I just have a quick comment. We did see a reduction in this, which is good for our district. It's dropped down, I believe it was 1,000 on each of them, correct?
Yes.
And our Strive students were still at that same number. I had some discussion through committee with Ms. Godluski just concerning those Strive students, and I know we have an outstanding program in district, and I, again, I always question, why do we lose to like a CC Tech when we're doing such a good job in-house? And I just want to try and tackle that a little bit more, and try and reel that in a little bit, and maybe save that $14,500 per student, so. But again, we did see a good reduction per student on the full-time and the 15 special ed students, so good stuff.
I'd like to recommend discussion regarding the membership renewal of the New Jersey Interscholastic Athletic Association for the 1920 school year, and the amount of $2,150.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of year-two renewal for the following contracts at the current contract price, from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with an option to renew for a one-year term for a maximum of a three-year contract. They are all listed. First is Concrete and Masonery Services, Fabry Builders, Carpet and Flooring Services, Rose Floor Covering, Roofing Services, Kowalski Roofing Services, Plumbing Services, Velasco Mechanical, Electrical Services, Leeway Electrical, Advertising Gymnasium Hall, JMI Enterprises, LLC, Diesel Fuel, Riggins Incorporated, Alternative High School, Camelot Education Resources.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Medio?
This Camelot, what does this total contract price involve? Is there a limit on the number of students we can send there?
We just increased the number of students for next year. Mr. Frangipani, does this contract include the students that we added?
No.
It does not?
Not for the...
So we're still at, what was the total that we're at before we added the three classrooms?
The current total at Camelot is 95. We're going to add three more classes for BD. However, those seats will be interchangeable, so we'll always make sure they're filled. If we don't have enough BD students, we can place regular ed students in there, too.
So we'll be placing an addendum on the next agenda?
The next, yeah, we just got the contract, I just gave it to Mr. DeSanto to review, and then we will move forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Included in that addendum, in that next contract, can we also have a per-student cost, so that above whatever number we start at with in September, if we add more students, we pay them on a per-student basis? And just to explain what I'm talking about, I'm sick and tired of hearing about, "We don't have a spot to send these students." Camelot's accepting BD students now, they're accepting the other, anybody who's a problem at the high school or the middle school, I'm sure no other board member wants to hear, "Well, they belong there, but we don't have a spot for them." There's plenty of spots, it's a matter of sending them over, and sending the correct message to the students that misbehaving has consequences.
Mr. Medio, I do agree with you, and then one thing I do just want to touch base on as well, that program also is dealing with students that just do not learn, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Frangipani, in the size of a high school setting, so some of them students are not considered problem students, am I correct?
I'm not sure if I understand your question. The students that have been signed there have had difficulties in the regular setting, all the students. There was some that were assigned there for credit recovery, but I discourage that, because I'd rather not give up that seat for a student who has behavior issues.
So we would have an influx of the current-style student, and then the BD-style student in there as well?
We currently have BD-style, two classes now, one middle and one high school. We are going to add the classes that are currently at the high school, all be going to the BD. Some students will be able to transition back, we're going to set up a transition class for students who are, we have a few students who are successful in BD that can manage in the high school, we want to keep them in that program if they can, you know, if they're doing well.
Just concerning BD in general, again, I'm on this two-year, I've been away for two years. When I originally was here, we had X amount of space, so if I'm, correct me, Mr. Medio, if there's three classrooms and 15 BD in each classroom, that's 45 BD, but possibly we could have 90-style BD students that don't fit into that program at the high school, so is that something that you're thinking when you say?
My thinking's real simple. You can't sit on a board, or you can't be an administrator, and continuously say you're interested in student safety, and you're worried about student safety, and then have kids jump other kids, pound them into the ground, and get 10 days off and come back to school. You're sending the wrong message, especially when the kid that gets pounded into the ground gets sent to Cunningham. Now, I don't want to bring that out, but that's the kind of thing that goes on. If the principal has a problem, if there's a kid who's in his third fight in October, in November, I don't want to hear that we don't have space for them. You're not addressing safety problems if that's ever said again. You're not addressing safety problems if that's ever said again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. English?
Yes?
Yes. If the concerns that are being raised are the concerns of the entire board, the base contract provides for a limit, it's a not-to-exceed. So I wouldn't wait for the addendum, I would have the board approval be conditioned upon there being unit pricing per student on any increase, because right now, it's not worded consistent with what I'm hearing. So it could be approval of the professional services contract to include unit pricing for additional students, and that would be covered under the base contract as well as the addendum. I didn't want to leave it just to the addendum.
I have no problem with that.
No problem here.
Do I see any problem with that? Dr. Gruccio? That's, we need a motion, huh?
Well, once you've started.
I'm sorry.
Is that the last one?
To reword it, you know, I still have to keep going.
Okay.
Bob, do you want me to re, do you want me to read that with a, an, okay. So the Alternative High School, Camelot Educational Resources, to include unit pricing for additional student slots, right? Okay. Okay. I'd like to recommend discussion of the approval of a three-year renewal for the following contracts at the current contract price from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with an option to renew for a one-year term for a maximum of a three-year contract. Asphalt paving services, Asphalt Paving Corporation; athletic field maintenance, herbicide, pesticide, field services, stops and turf management; online literacy services, Nucella.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Dr. Timothy Rhine for medical services as chief school physician at the current rate for July 1, 19 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Dr. Joseph Bernardino and Dr. Brad Bernardino for medical services as alternate school physicians at the current rate for July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Inspire Healthcare Occupational Health Services for Dr. Balagon for medical screening services at the current rate for July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding the professional service contract to Gruccio, Pepper, DeSanto, and Ruth for Labor Relations Attorney Services at the current rate for fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional service contract to Gruccio, Pepper, DeSanto, and Ruth for board solicitor at a current rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Cape Bar and Satter PA for alternate counsel at the current rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
Would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional service contract to Frankie Domenico Esquire for alternate counsel at the current rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
Would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional services contract to Grace Marmero LLP for alternate counsel at the current rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding professional services to Manders Marigi Ported and Faro Architects LLC for the Architect of Record at the current rate for July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of awarding the following contract, before and after-school care for the term of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with an option to renew two one-year terms or one two-year term for a maximum of three-year term. Contractors of Cumberland, Cape Atlantic YMCA.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of awarding the following contract, Maintenance and Support of District IT Services, for the term of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with an option to renew two one-year terms or one two-year term for the maximum of a three-year term. Maintenance and Support of District IT Services Contract, the Pro Computer Service.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of a resolution awarding a professional services for auditor for a term of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. It should be noted that there is a $6,300 reduction, excuse me, from the prior year. Services for the auditor are from Ford Scott Associates LLC.
Questions or comments? Reduction, that's a nice word.
I would like to recommend discussion of awarding the following contract, Substitute Staffing Services, RFP, for the term of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with an option to renew two one-year terms or one two-year term for a maximum of three-year term. Substitute Staffing Services will be ESS Source for Teachers.
Questions or comments? Mr. Alrich?
First is a question. It was brought up in the comments that this service had been previously contracted by Britton Public Schools. So my question for Dr. Gruccio is, when this decision was made to award this RFP, was there any discussion with the Britton Public Schools superintendent to find out why they had to let this company go?
I was not involved in the process, I do not know. Dr. Rossi, was there any conversation with Britton, are you aware of?
There was no conversation with Britton.
Okay, next would be a comment, in that if we, and I wasn't aware that Britton Public Schools had this vendor, because we can only go by what's recommended by the RFP. I think it would be logical that if Britton Public Schools, a major Cumberland County school district, was involved in these services and had a problem, that that information should come to the light of the board and to the committee. So I have some hesitation in approving a contract where they've been discontinued in Britton Public Schools, so I would say that we need some more information.
I just want you to be aware that C.C. Tech and Cumberland Regional both use Source for Teachers and have been using it.
All right, prior, prior to that was the committee giving that information of successful usage from Cumberland County Schools while the process was ongoing.
The RFP process was conducted as normal, evaluated by senior staff, and the recommendation was made. As I mentioned earlier, there is an unfortunate requirement that this savings is saving jobs, it's saving lots of things in the budget. So with a one-year commitment and monitoring from myself, Mr. Merkley, obviously others, Dr. Gruccio, we will work to assure success, and it is a one-year commitment. We expect that current people will return. I think, Mr. Alrich, frankly, in this environment, the rubber meets the road with how much you pay. It could be Ronald McDonald running this program. If you're not paying, you're going to have a hard time getting people to come to the district and sub. I think that's something Mr. Merkley and I have been discussing. The amount of money we offer is, is essential here.
And I would follow up with a quick Google search, would indicate that this same company has had problems fulfilling their staffing needs. So with, with that being said, Dr. Rossi, there's no guarantee that they're going to have any better staffing rate than Insight has right now.
Correct. As you know, Tom, you've been around, we ran in our office, ourselves, we had Insight come in, and still, Fridays in the spring, Wednesday at Macy's, whatever you want to say-
Got it.
-is a tremendous challenge. And if, my opinion, from my years' experience, Mr. Merkley's, I believe, if you're paying, people won't be so quick to drop us for a more desirable job. As the public may not know, someone will take a position off of Aesop, which is our substitute system. For two days, they will hold it because it's going to be on Wednesday, and it was picked up on Monday. On Tuesday night, a third-grade regular ed classroom comes available in Buna. The person drops us with no recourse and picks up Buna. That's the nature of what we're dealing with. If it's a special education class or a BD class, they're going to say to themselves, "Well, I'm going to take the third-grade class." So there's a lot of issues at work here that aren't really vendor-oriented, and with this much savings, speaking for myself, maybe Mr. Salerno, Mr. Dr. Merk, Dr. Gruccio, Mr. Merkley, it's worth the chance for a one-year commitment with our oversight.
And I would just add that if you, it's, it goes to the old saying that if it seems too good, it probably isn't, so, because it, the contracts should all be the same, so I have some worries that-
Cannot disagree with what you're saying about what we've seen in other places, but if you speak to principals, they, they don't dislike anything we've been doing with our vendors, but they're not overwhelmingly happy with what we've had either, so it's certainly a present problem, no matter who is in that seat.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rossi. Excuse me, just one question. What do we currently pay for a substitute?
Currently, if you are not certificated on a day-here, day-there basis, you'll make $80. If you are certificated, day-here, day-there basis, you'll make $90. If you are long-term, which is a minimum of 15 workdays, you'll make $115.
Is there a state average that we compare to? Are we high, are we low?
It's a good question, we're lower than Tech, which is probably not unusual, and we're probably right there with the others, in my view. But we, like I said, Mr. Merkley and I have discussed trying to scrape together some, some dollars. This is where I believe the success will lie, strictly dollars and cents.
Thank you.
I would like to recommend discussion of awarding the following contract for online educational services for the term of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with option to renew two one-year terms- Or one two-year term for a maximum of a three-year term. Online educational service would be Edgysir.
Any questions or comments?
Discussion regarding the following Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives: Transportation Jointure, Transportation Quoted Contracts, Transportation Addendum, Student Transportation Services, and Pupil Transportation Services.
Questions or comments?
That's it? Okay. All right, I would like to recommend approval of items 4.1 through 4.34.
Just a quick question, Mr. Merkley, as far as our bidding process, I know it's rather large, and when we do a renewal of one-year or two-year, et cetera, do you, being the fresh set of eyes in the group here, do you see us following the proper practice here?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Salerno, the purchasing agent, because a lot of what's on this agenda came directly out of his office, and he does a fantastic job with that. So kudos to Mrs. Salerno for putting together a very professional bid package and process for saving the violent school district money when it comes to both professional services and goods, goods and products. So, yeah, we're very efficient when we put together bid specs and our timeliness. When you look at renewable for one, two-year or two one-years, it's very common, it's dictated by law. I'm very happy with, with the cycle we're on in approving contracts, and I actually have some, some initiatives I plan on rolling out over the summer regarding our, our bidding and our services that we do offer.
And then as far as like professional services, I, when I was here previously, it seemed like we were on a cycle, and it would seem to be a three-year cycle. I hear some districts do a five-year cycle. If possible, just if you can get me where we do stand that way, is this how the district still is doing it? And do we plan to change anything in the future and things like that? I would, you know, like to get some information on that, please.
Sure, for the benefit of the public and the board, professional services specifically, our, our annual contracts, and there, it's recommended by the state that you do a three- and five-year cycle. For violin, because we have so many, I'm proposing that we go on a five-year cycle. There's a, there's a board attorney, labor, architect, insurance broker, and banking services, and on a five-year, an auditor, and this year, you'll see that auditor was bid out. Last year, I think we did labor, or legal. Next year, I'm probably going to line up banking or architect. So on a five-year cycle, and in between those years, we do spot check, which is called a comparative process. Mr. DeSanto would like to point that out to you. We, we use a comparative process, it's in law, so in between bidding years, we reach out to peer districts. For us, peer districts are the high school districts in Cumberland County. You know, I wouldn't reach out to a high school district in Burton County because it's a different, different set of fees. And we do that, so if you were to look at architect, you'll find that those rates that we're paying to Manders and Marigi are very competitive to what you would get from an architect from, there's not many actually that can do a, a school district in, in Cumberland County, I think there's only one other one, but, but in Natta County, it's very competitive. Same thing with, I did reach out to our peer districts for labor this year and legal services, and we're very comparative. Actually, we're on the lower end of things, believe it or not, for that, which I was happy to see. So yes, a, a five-year cycle for professional services with comparative pricing in between.
If a board member would like to sit in and have any discussion concerning some of that process, I would gladly, as the ex officio of finance, step off of that if, and or if they have any questions, they can just seek you at any time, too, is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely, it's not a problem at all.
All right, appreciate it, thank you. At this time, do I, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a roll call, please. Mr. Costa?
Yes, but just going back to the personnel items, I need to abstain from 1.4.
So noted. Mr. Fioki?
Yes, I will accept, I will have to abstain from number 4.8, 4.19A, NB, 4.27-
Whoa. Are you able to give me that list after this?
Absolutely.
You can say them now, just give me the list after this.
The last, so 4.27 and 4.3, and I will give you the list after.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, to all abstain on 4.14, and no to 4.32, that's the Source for Teachers contract.
What was the abstention?
4.14.
4.14.
4.14 is the abstention, 4.32 is the no vote.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, but I also would like to abstain my vote, abstain from item 1.4.
The bargaining agreement?
Yes.
Ms. Pennelli?
Yes, but no to 4.32 for the ESS contract.
Mr. Alrich?
I'm going to go yes, I also have to abstain from 1.4, got by me. I'll bling that on old age, the VEA contract, and I'm voting no for 4.3 ESS contract.
Mr. English? I'm voting yes to everything.
I'm going to vote no for 4.32. And I need, I just need a, this contract is, when is it effective? September 1?
July 1.
July 1? I think, as I'm getting the feeling from the board here, it didn't get to the committee level, and there's some things that, did it already pass?
Yeah.
Did it pass?
Yeah, passed, 5-4.
5-4. If it passed 5-4, then...
It did pass 5-4. Mr. Holmes said he was voting no on...
He abstained. He voted no for the other.
I abstained from 4.14, which is Big Brothers Big Sisters.
Okay.
And I voted no to 4.32.
My feeling on the 4.32 is strictly based on this committee structure that we're continuing to rely on. And there's some questions that Mr. Alrich asked that brought that to my attention.
It's 5-4. It's 5-4.
5-4 for yes, correct?
So far...
That's it?
Wait a second. Do you want this to go to committee? I'll change my vote if you want it to go to committee. What do you want?
I have a question concerning RFPs and going to committees.
First of all, record the vote, and then Mr. Merkley will announce what happened on this.
Gene can change his vote.
So he changes his vote to a nay, and it's 5-4, and the motion fails?
Assuming Mr. English voted no, it currently stands at 5-4 in favor of 4.32.
The point I'm trying to make here is, I'm not sure if RFPs go to committee or not, but it's that type of discussion that needs to happen.
The proper process is when administration proposes to put something out for RFP, that's the time to notify the appropriate committee before it goes out to bid. Otherwise, you've put the process in motion, you've incurred the expense, the vendors have all bid in good faith, and...
You can't.
Pardon me?
Finish your thought.
So, you know, you place yourself in a legal predicament because you've set out, unless you have a valid reason to reject the bid, you know, then you, you know, that's why this needs, the process needs to start before it goes out for RFP.
Just my question, was that process fulfilled?
No, not that I know of, no.
It was not on the...
It did not come in front of the finance committee.
And I, that being said, there's a number of bids that didn't come from the finance committee. Did Edgysir come in front of the finance committee?
No, it's not the usual procedure. Once the bids go out, you know, then you either accept or reject the bid, or you table the award.
It's the nature of this one, again, that's strictly, I'm making a point here. So Mr. Medio, to answer your question, future things like this require some, a little bit more discussion, maybe with the board president and the committee accordingly.
I don't have a problem going either way with this because, from my understanding, nobody on this board knew about these problems before tonight. Okay? Now, I also understand about the money issue, and I guess something that I would say prompts me to vote yes is because all these people who came up and told us they do a good job, and Mr. Rossi said they do a good job, and they're going to keep their jobs. So that's what prompts me to say yes. But what I'm saying is, if I have four board members who have a major problem with it, I'm willing to vote with you and change it. If you don't have a major problem, you're just going to say no to have something changed in the future, that's okay, too. I'll stay at the yes.
That's the point I'm trying to make, the latter. So, and I understand our process, but again, I like to absorb the information way ahead of time, not this evening.
I understand what you're saying, but I kind of have a problem with understanding a process where somebody 15 miles away uses the guy, fires the guy, and we don't know about it till tonight.
Mr. Sabrana?
I like a little clarity here. Are we talking about expanding the process to every single item that's going to go before committee? I mean, you know, that's a quintessential example of micromanagement, isn't it? And how do you parse the issues that are going to go before the committee versus the ones that are going to...
I guess, I think of some things that come our way are really slam dunks and home runs, and I've been in Dr. Rossi's company long enough to know his face says this is a roll of the dice, in my feeling. Am I correct when I say that, or...
Just to clarify, not speaking to Bridgestone is not saying in unawareness of the experience at Bridgestone. There is certainly no desire to lay off basic skills teachers. There's no desire to lay off bus attendants. We're in a financial situation where this avenue was available to us. It may be more work for myself, Mr. Merkley, and others, but we're willing to do that, and we are indeed, Mr. English, rolling the dice. But with 14 million, as you all know, you're in an untenable situation. I have great respect for Insight, I was the one who brought them here. Mr. Kelly, their CEO, is a very professional person. But we're in a corner financially, and we're rolling the dice.
Dr. Rossi, if they were professional, do you think they would have sent the email out that they did?
The email was not unprofessional, how it was written. I think there's some feelings here about, as the board is expressing now, about the competitor. There are some feelings about wanting to be here, but Mr. Merkley and I were aware of what number was going to come in. And it's not something I love doing, just like I don't want to lay anybody off. But I have 14 million, and he has 14 million to wrestle with every day, Mr. Mustarel and others, gray hairs, all of us. This is not pleasant. It's saving a lot of jobs, this number.
I need to interrupt. You need to understand what the RFP process is like. There were six bidders. Five of them, one of them was disqualified because they failed, they were unresponsive because they didn't have a required form. Five of them were responsive. The incumbent was the highest price of all bidders. They're comfortable. So by putting it out, if you were to look at all of the presentations, and they were books, I mean, they're all listing, you know, their experiences and how many schools they're in, and they all have letters of recommendation. Are you going to, you think in the Insight package they're going to put where they weren't renewed? No one's going to do that. However, you also need to know that independently, there were three evaluators that independently provided a rating sheet, which can be available to you. They were rated on three separate areas, price being one, technical criteria being one, management experience being one. Three independent ratings were done, and all three of them came back for the bidder that is on the sheet. It's just not done just because we want to do it, it's done professionally. And we, since the three evaluators chose the same vendor, we put it on the agenda.
So RFPs do not go through the committee process, correct?
Mr. English, may I comment? If the district was coming up with a new program or a new position, and then the result of that would be an RFP, then that new program or new position is probably the subject of a committee. Okay? But on the ones that we've been doing, you know, those are routine RFPs, they've been done, it's gone through the process that Mr. Merkley described and all that, it wouldn't be appropriate to vent that before a committee. It's not a new program or a new position, and that would be my suggestion to the board.
One other item, Mr. English, I can give you an example of something I'm in the middle of right now. Mr. Salerno is working along with me. We're going through the district evaluating the copiers, just 110 copiers. It's worth millions. Well, it's time to shop it. We believe we're going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're going to bring the final product to you when we determine who that low bidder is going to be. It's not something that we have in the budget, but it's something that we believe we can roll out over the summer if it comes to fruition. The two vendors are out now, we're waiting to get results back, I think in the next couple of weeks, hopefully having a recommendation for June. I mean, that's, it's, they're existing, and we're just doing our due diligence in making sure we're getting the best price for the product that we already have in place.
I understand. And again, when you hear what was said with Bridgestone, and that just gives you that little question mark in your head, that's all. And again, it's the first time that I pretty much heard it, so that caused me to have a little concern. And I know that each of you are concerned, so that also concerns me, so...
Mr. English?
Yes?
Let me just say, I don't feel comfortable rolling the dice when it comes to consistency in the classroom, quality of education, and quality of work.
Duly noted.
And, you know, for just historical information, I've been on the board 10 years, I guess, and RFPs have rolled through committees at times. Not all RFPs, obviously, like, has been represented, but RFPs have been. Matter of fact, last year, legal was. So I would just say that, you know, and the budget committee has, you know, seen that, the finance. So RFPs at times do run through committees to make sure that we're all on the same page, that, you know, we want to go out for this service. I think the point was that something like this with Insight and changing, my last conversation on any committee was that the district was trying to work out a different way to do substitute teaching through itinerant teachers at each school. There was never any discussion to change vendors or go out to RFP with another vendor. And I'm not, I'm not a supporter of Insight. Their sub-rates have been terrible, but I'm even more concerned that we have a vendor coming in that obviously taken on a big district, and I don't know that, you know, that they're going to be able to fill it any better than the less. So I guess what we say, what we say is, roll the dice, the continuity of instruction in the classroom doesn't matter because we can save a buck. I'm saying that's the wrong way to look at it, that's all.
It will be the same people, though, that are working in the classrooms. It's not going to be all new people, the same people just work through a different company.
Okay.
So they're the ones that provide the continuity.
All right. It's simple economics. If you're providing, like, if they can come underbid that drastically, something is going on, whether giving the employees less benefits, they're doing something because it's a matter of operating expenses. So when it's too far out of line with other bidders, that worries me. Because bidders, you know, from time to time throughout the years, you'll see a real lowball, and you'll see somebody else. And realistically, it just red flags me, that's all. And, you know, we are entitled, even though the committee of professionals did submit an evaluation, last year, they submitted a recommendation for legal, and it came up to a contentious board vote. So you can't have your cake and eat it, too, is my message, that's all.
Just so you know, although they're the low bidder, four of them were all at the same number. They were all at 28%. ESS was 27.95, so five of them were all at basically 28%. Insight was 3.5% higher as the incumbent. Just, it's not that they low, they didn't lowball, all five of them were at 28%. On the evaluation, they just stood out, they're going to place a full-time employee in the district to manage it. So there were things that were in the proposal that were attractive to the evaluators, just to let you know.
Got it.
I think what you're going to experience with this board is when I see three or four people thinking a certain way, I owe it to them to really try and get involved in that and say, hey, maybe this is something that should have went to committee. I'll get you that not everyone has to go, but I just, I'm here for about three years, so it's kind of the way I ride, so, you know, we have to all work together, but...
Did you vote, Scott?
Yes, I voted.
Did you vote?
We all voted, it's done.
It's done, 5-4.
It's 5-4.
It passed.
Mr. Medio, he understands what I, you understand what I said, correct?
Yeah, it's fine with me, I'd leave the decision up to you.
Thank you.
Let the minutes reflect that 4.32 passed on a 5-4 vote.
Thank you. It's just, also, it's constructive conversation, that's all I mean. I'm asking this board not to wish they would have said it when they get in the parking lot, so, you know, it's out there.
And I tell you, sometimes I should just shut up. And I know that, because Cedric told me that once. I'm saying that the administration, that the board has a responsibility to vote yes or no, right? So we get recommendations. Sometimes we always don't go with that recommendation because we're getting input from the public, which is our due diligence. We can't always look at it that that's the bottom line on that dollar. And I understand our deficit, and I get it. But the administration cannot take it personal when questions are being asked because we have a lack of information, and that's what we have here. And that causes the problem, so I'll go back to something that is on my mind, is that I am prepared to enter to, if I have to move the motion myself, to get rid of these combined meetings. Because that is what's creating the problem. We don't have any time to digest this and debate this and think this through. Thank you.
Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. At our last meeting, Mr. Medio had questioned how many people conflict in the evaluation type process. And I know that when I was on this board in the past, we got a legal opinion, but I'm also understanding that there is some new law that's being discussed. I don't know if it's going to be passed yesterday, today, two years from now. But what I would like to see if it has support through this board, when it comes to invoking the doctrine of necessity, we can, he makes it, excuse me, Mr. Medio makes an interesting point, it's not like my wife that lives in my house, if you understand what I'm saying here. And it's, he's mild, it's him and his son, it's miles apart from what I think it stands for. I would ask that we, that if you support this, that Mr. DeSanto can get an updated legal opinion. It can't hurt us. I mean, we're relying on something that is two years old, Mr. DeSanto, three years?
2013.
Wow.
2013.
2013, so like...
And 2014, there were three expressed opinions directed to the Violin Board of Education.
And I respect those opinions, but through it all, things do change, and we're getting ready to have a retreat in two weeks, so honestly, when Mr. Medio said that he'll run that gambit, I'm not in the mood to replace another board member for something that might be done incorrectly. I would much rather get this opinion, and we move forward that way. Talk to me.
I just want you to remember one thing. I just want you to remember one thing. I'm not sitting here like some guy with a mask on and a gun, holding you up. I'm not doing anything illegal. Now, I don't know if the correct word is law, code, regulation, I don't know which word it is, but I'm following Title 18, is it? And it says in there that you need a majority of the board to evaluate the superintendent, and everyone knows that you are always told the most important job of a board member is choosing the superintendent when the position becomes available. Okay? So, I'm put in the position of having a dilemma. I can either follow the law or follow the completely contradictory ethics opinion. Now, I understand if you say that you're in a different position, I understand that, but you don't even know if I talk to my son. They don't know if I'm estranged from him. For all they know, I want to, you know, put this kids tool. So, how could you even talk about me not being able to do my job as a school board member? It's absurd. And like I said, if I'm going to be the test case, that's fine with me, it takes a year anyhow, I might be gone by then.
I guess my fear is, Mr. Medio, we've already, the superintendent has gone a year without an evaluation, if I'm correct. If we have a chance to start that process, I don't want to taint that process. If indeed, say you decide to be part of that process and then halfway through, it's can't be done, then we wasted all that time. So, my thought process is, in talking with, it's an open discussion tonight, if you want to, I guess we're going to use that word, roll the dice with something like this versus getting an updated opinion, that's where I'm at.
No, I'm not opposed to getting an updated opinion. I don't have a problem with that. But I'm just saying that the ethics ruling was wrong then, and it's just not right. There's nothing else you could say. I'm not talking about myself, I'm not talking about any board members, I'm not talking about the solicitor, I'm talking about New Jersey law. Every one of us was elected to do the job of a school board member, and we're being told we can't do the job because of some arbitrary ruling by an ethics commission that has gone completely out of control.
Mr. English, if I may have a couple of minutes here. The doctrine of necessity was developed by our court system to allow public bodies like this board to function. The whole notion of the doctrine of necessity is if a statute or a rule or regulation says you need a majority to vote. Mr. Medio is correct, and I mentioned it in my last email as well as other legal opinions, that the Code 6A, New Jersey Administrative Code, says that the written performance evaluation and the conference with the superintendent must be done by a majority of the full membership. We have been before this ethics commission three times, twice on evaluations and once on the renewal, non-renewal question involving the superintendent. Each time they came back, and I called it absurd then, and I'm calling it absurd today, of all of the five of you that were deemed to have conflicts, people with teachers, spouses, the most absurd one is his. And back in 2013, we also had Mr. Baruffi on the board, and his emancipated daughter was also deemed conflicted. But, so, I mentioned in my memo that you're in a catch 22. You follow the advisory opinion of the body that regulates your conduct, or you follow the code which says that you must do this by a majority. It's truly, it's truly a dilemma. It's truly, it's so inconsistent. Now, the point is, is even if it's absurd that Mr. Medio has a conflict, the point is, they were even more incorrect when they said that four board members can do the evaluation. You follow me in the words? Number one, I don't think he has a conflict, but number two is, even assuming that he has a conflict, they had the opportunity to keep their mouth shut and not tell us that our doctrine of necessity resolution was incorrect.
We're being ruled by people who say that four out of nine is a majority. First graders know that's wrong.
And what happened, I want to remind the board, back in 2014, with Mr. Medio, you were president, Mrs. Morello was vice president, we even filed a request for declaratory judgment with the commissioner, and he declined to rule. He didn't get involved. He was the one that could have said, you follow my code. This is the commissioner's code, 6A. So, it would be my recommendation that we give it this chance. If we get the same absurd ruling, then I would request your permission to go to Superior Court because the doctrine of necessity is not just for school boards. We would get a declaratory ruling from the court system, not the commissioner this time, and try to get the court system to say, you are a classic case of why the doctrine of necessity was ever even developed, because you should be able to do your job.
Well, I would suggest move right to Superior Court now, because we already have the opinions, so why waste the cost of legal? Move to Superior Court.
Well, the problem with that, Tom, is that the court system wants to have a pending case or controversy, you know what I mean? And a five-year-old opinion may say, well, we don't know what they would do now, and we don't give advisory opinions. I'm just saying to you, you know, technically and procedurally, it's the best way to go. And I'm prepared, you know, I'm prepared to get this thing filed in two days, and, you know, we'll see what happens.
My feeling is, I don't believe this can hurt.
By the way, the statute, there has been, I checked Mr. Mylum's office, the statute has, the bill in the Assembly has been there since January of 18. There were, the New Jersey school boards helped put this bill in the pot, you know, in the system. The bill would eliminate certain wording in the ethics rules that would provide that that is not a conflict, because he is not an immediate family member living in the household. But we don't know when and if that bill will ever come to the light of day, because if it's been languishing 14, 15 months in committee, we don't know. So, one thing that can be done is reaching out to our legislators and see if they could move this bill out of committee. And I can email the board tomorrow with the Assembly number, so you would have it.
Bob, as far as the superintendent search, that's the same exact thing, correct?
Those opinions say any issue involving the superintendent, it could be renewal, non-renewal, it could be evaluation, it could be discipline, it could be search, you know, extension of a, anything. So, it really, it really ties your hands.
So, to me, again, this is a no-brainer, because the next thing will be, you evaluate your superintendent every year. You're going to do a superintendent search eventually, you just have to have something updated better than 2013, 14, now that we're in 2019, in my opinion. So, as a board, I don't think it can hurt us, and I would, if I would have, I'm just finding, you know, I just found out that the superintendent evaluation, things didn't happen last year. If I would have known that, I would have, this would have started in January, because this is, this has to be done. So, you know, I, do I, first of all, can I just ask you to do it, or do we need the majority of the board to do it?
You have to have a motion second and adoption of resolution.
Hey, at that point, then, that's it. I make a motion for not...
Gene should make it, it's his thing.
Okay.
I make the motion to invoke the doctrine of necessity.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
No.
Mr. Alwarch?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can I just ask a question, Bob? The motion was to invoke the doctrine of necessity. I don't think we can do that. Isn't it to request invoking, I mean, like, the board, can the board invoke it themselves?
No, what the board did tonight was adopt that resolution that was attached to their packet. It's a resolution invoking the doctrine of necessity, that's what they voted on, yes.
All right, and then it gets sent to the state for approval?
Part of the resolution, under a directive from the Ethics Commission, all of the certified copies of resolutions like this get sent to them.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, do I have a motion for the approval of bills incurred during March of 2019?
So moved.
A quick question. There's an Apple bill for $90,877.40. What's it for?
Well, I don't think I can answer that up here right now, I'd have to get your response to that. I do know all spending's been shut down, and only spending that's going around is coming through grants.
Mr. Frye, are you aware, or you be able to address that? I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm with Mr. Merkley, can you give me a minute? And I'll look it up, see exactly what it is. But it's all title money that we've been spending on those kind of pieces, so...
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. There's Buna Athletic Fund for $1,000, which I didn't know why we would pay Buna Athletics any money. And then if my calculations are correct, we spent over $500 this month on utilities, that's with gas and electric. Is there any way to get some capital funding to do solar or anything, to save money on utilities?
Well, I can answer that. We're currently, through Mr. Weaver's office and Mr. Farinaccio's office, we're reviewing ESIP programs, which are Energy Savings Initiative programs for the state. We're in the initial stages of it, and it is exactly for that reason. More will be coming to you at a later point. It takes months to get through the whole process, like eight to nine months, so you'll be hearing more about that, but yes.
Okay, and I know I've said this many times before, and I'm super cheap, so I drive by the schools at night and all the lights are on. And it just drives me crazy because nobody's home and the lights are on. So, and I know I've talked about this for the past couple of months, how can we ensure that when the staff leaves that they turn the lights out? Because you're just burning energy.
Actually, that's all part of that ESIP program. They evaluate the lighting, they evaluate motion sensors, that's all part of the process.
Let me just piggyback on something with the solar piece. When I was on the board, Mr. Frye and I, we had some great discussion concerning that walkway at the high school, and the perfect place to put solar on top of, like Cumberland Regional, like Rossi Honda, et cetera. And I don't know, did it never get any traction, Mr. Frye? What happened there? Are we not allowed to do solar in Vineland, New Jersey? What happened there?
We did design, had a design competition, city engineers came to judge the student proposals. A wonderful project went forward, and then you can't dump solar energy in East Vineland back into the grid right now. So, that's where it stopped. So, we talked about doing batteries and those pieces, then we changed the lighting to LED lighting as well, so the savings wasn't there to balance each other out by telling you added the batteries and the off-grid solar. But we can check again to see if they've changed that, I don't believe they have.
My question, then, you can't do that in East Vineland, says who?
Says city utility.
Says who?
City utility.
City utility?
City utility, yes.
He's correct, because we have a municipal electric utility, most solar fields that you see go in, they sell something called an SREC. An SREC has value, and every three months you sell it on the market. Here, you're not allowed to, it's your excess that you generate. You're not allowed to sell it, you're not allowed to generate excess. You are allowed to generate enough for your own buildings, but you're not allowed to sell the excess.
I think there are few schools that would fall under us being able to do it, but most would not.
It's a shame.
Just a simple follow-up question. We have security patrols that go around at night, so if they see lights on, how simple is it to enter the school, shut their lights off, and then egress from the school?
It's impossible.
All right, there you go.
Well, I've been saying this for 20 years, and they're still on, so obviously it's impossible.
Mr. Farinaccio, I just want to put you on the spot here, because I, Johnstone and the high school, and if I'm out one night, coming in around 2:00 in the morning, I do notice that high school lights on in that same area. Is that, is that something that these lights are mandatory to be on, or...
We do leave some lights on for security purposes, but in essence, the majority of lighting should be, should be stopped, shut off. We have programs in place with our custodial supervisors, and, you know, we are constantly checking on that. And, you know, I guess the question is, what time are you seeing the lighting? We have people sometimes in the building with absenteeism, we have people that go into the buildings, we have sometimes custodians working until 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. in the mornings, and so they're playing catch-up. But, at the end of it, lights are getting shut off. You know, I can be a little bit more specific if I knew schools and look into our schedules, but I'd be happy to do that. Some lighting is a good thing. You want to have some security lighting. Every time I'm by a school, I was by Memorial School the other night at 11:30 p.m., and other than your exterior building lights, the majority of classrooms were off. I've drive by the high schools all the time, and I'm constantly looking at that. The lighting that I see, other than some perimeter lighting and your outside flood lighting, the classrooms that I've driven by have been off. So, again, we do have schedules based on limited personnel that don't get to all the buildings at the same time. We're moving custodial, custodians around during the evening. Some guys don't finish up till 3:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the mornings at some buildings, and so there might be lights on at certain points. Again, our program is, go in the building, clean the space, shut the lights out behind you. So, you know, I'd have to do some investigation and some follow-up. What I drive by and see, they're out. You know, we have checks, I know I can touch base with Mr. Prevenzano, our 24-hour security guard, John Mizaki, he'll let me know sometimes, I'll get a phone message if lights are being left on at a certain point. But, again, there's some programmatic operations on, you know, I just, I've never been in a situation where I've seen a building with every light on at midnight. I see certain lights on, some things in the building, so if I could get specifics or some of those things, but we do have, as Mr. Merkley explained, we are looking to put some automation controls in, that will definitely help, that will definitely help. We need to build our infrastructure, we have older buildings. Again, it is as simple, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate Mr. Medio, you know, it's an easy practice to shut a switch off, absolutely. I believe that in the majority, we are doing that, but, you know, I can't, if you're going by a school late at night and seeing lights on, I'd have to get specifics for that certain building.
With that high tech, with the automation and everything, if the lights need to be on, can't we just LED them then and be done, or are they all like that now?
Well, and that's, that is the other thing. We do have, in our, in our schools where we've had, our newer schools, Petway, Wallace, Center City School, we have light automation at all those buildings already. They are censored, they are timed, and... They are censored, they are timed, and, and they're off. In some of our older buildings, as our men go through and we do upgrades, sometimes it's project-wise or it's through general maintenance. We go through and we will put automated controls in certain areas. You know, the reality is, you know, we just, we have a lot of systems and a lot of lights. We have it built with our program. We've been converting over to LED. It's cost-effective now, you know, and the payoff, the initial cost is, is in that range. We're able to convert over light fixtures. And so we continue to practice that methodology and, and move forward for the, for the better or the good of the district.
Just maybe something that you could get to the board. It doesn't have to be tomorrow, it could be a week from now. I, I'd like to see maybe a two- to three-year comparison monthly, just to see where we were two years ago at this time, when we see, when we, the bills don't lie, so the same buildings have been open. I'd be curious.
Well, yes, and, and we've had, we're always looking at costs and energy auditing. Now, we've got some caveats. Our electric bill actually will rise because we brought on HVAC at Vineland High School South. And so, you know, there's a measurement where it was on air-conditioned, and that's going to be a factor to our energy budgeting. We worked along with Mr. Mustarel on that, capturing that. We have, you know, schools, some smaller square footage of schools are going to be leaving, Max Leichter, but yet we built Dominic Pila School at 100,000-square-foot building. So again, you're, you're, and Dominic Pila's state-of-the-art. We could, we argued with the state, they would not give us LED, but they gave us T8 fluorescents, which are a little bit better. But in the same lines, the building's fully automated, but yet it's still a larger square-footage area, heating, cooling, all of that. So you're, it's going to drive the overall energy bill up.
Bottom line, we're going to give Megan your cell phone number. When she cruises by, you're going to get that text, 2:00, Memorial School, East Wing, whatever. Bam, done.
Okay, thank you.
I have a request too, Dr. Guccio, is I saw that the Safety Committee met, and I'm actually on that committee and I didn't get notice of that. But on the next Safety Committee, it was referenced that lighting is left on inside the building for security reasons. So I'd like that not to be discussed here, but that expanded upon with some explanations of what that practice is.
Okay.
And how it's employed.
Okay.
Okay, do we vote? We vote or we had, no, we had a motion?
We don't, we don't have a motion yet.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I think we, yeah, we made the motion. Okay.
Approval of bills.
The motion for the approval of bills that incurred for March of 2019. Yes. And Cedric second, right?
So I'm sorry, yeah, I looked it up, looked the PO up, and this is all Title I funds for something called an MDM, Mobile Device Management System, licensing across the district that was carrier refunds through Title I. So what it does, it allows us, for instance, for the state testing, you have to send software packages down to mobile devices. This allows you to do that. It streamlines and makes more efficiently, efficient use of the resources we have. All MDM.
Thank you. It's a lot of money. Committee reports, do we have any committee report? Oh, I'm trying to get through it this night, I'm sorry. We have a motion?
Yes, we did.
And a second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Stay.
Ms. Pennelli?
Yes.
Mr. Olrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. Committee reports, do we have any committee reports this evening? Yes, Mr. Olrich.
The Policy and Personnel Committee met this evening. Present were Mr. Sabrana, Ms. Pennelli, Dr. Rossi, Mr. Merkley, Dr. Guccio, John Franjapani, myself, and Mr. English. We reviewed the following policies, which will appear on our next agenda. Alcoholic beverages on school premises revised to match current state law. Earn sick leave, it's a mandated policy. Also, a revised policy that's mandated on service animals and some preseason heat and also cold weather-type restrictions that the sports programs have to follow and outside activities. So in extreme heat and extreme cold. So that policy is, is revising. We also discussed bargaining unit with VASA and our non-certificated employees that that process is going to start, and more will follow. And that's the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Olrich. Do we have any, oh, yes, Mr. Medio.
The only thing I would say on that, the heat and cold, did Donnie Robbins talk to you about that? Because I think the NJSIAA has guidelines.
That's what we.
So all we have to do is follow their guidelines?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I was wondering.
Any other committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we did have an emergent item. VHS crew team has a chance to go to Nationals, which would be May 23rd, 24th, and 25th of 2019. Do I have a motion to approve this emergent item?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on it? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Pennelli?
Yes.
Mr. Olrich?
Yes, and good luck.
So moved. Mr. English?
Yes. At this time, opportunity for the public to address the board on any item. Please limit your comments to five minutes. And I will be using my phone as a timer, so don't panic if you hit me for that. You have it? Okay, I'm off the hook then. You got it.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Guccio. I wanted to take the time to address some things that were said by various members of the public.
Can you state your name, please?
Yeah, Jeff Martin, 2026 East Lane Avenue. To the public on Monday night regarding any potential changes to AMSA. First, I want to say I echo Mr. English's sympathies regarding the AMSA program. It's tremendous asset to our district, and I think there certainly needs to be a high-caliber program for our accelerated students. That being said, I do find it a bit redundant to pour even more resources into this very small population of advanced students when they can flourish in just about any circumstance. I also think all this talk about students being stressed about having to potentially matriculate back into the regular education population is kind of silly. Where was the concern for mental well-being when students with legitimate behavioral disorders and emotional disturbances were booted from Johnstone, which holds a capacity of over 600 students, to fill it with roughly 200 kids and little over 20 teachers? Our students with behavioral disorders didn't get an informational session breaking down the move, as these AMSA parents did. They certainly didn't get an email or a flyer telling them to show up at a school board meeting to fight against this move. As I've said before, BD doesn't mean bad. A BD classification is not a reward either. A behavioral disorder is an umbrella term that basically describes what the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act summarizes, an inability to learn that cannot be explained by intellectual, sensory, or health factors, an inability to build or maintain satisfactory interpersonal relationships with peers and teachers, inappropriate types of behavior or feelings under normal circumstances, a general pervasive mood of unhappiness or depression, or tendency to develop physical symptoms or fears associated with personal or school problems. I know it's so easy to see a child acting out and cursing, or having to be restrained and think, wow, that kid is bad. But until you've met these children and spent an extended amount of time with them, you don't see the mental turmoil or the possible trauma that they undergo on a daily basis. I still find it incredibly disheartening that this population was uprooted in the first place from their school for an elective program such as AMSA to occupy 1/3 of the school's capacity. I spoke several times about this issue last year, and I'm glad members of the board and public are finally asking the right questions regarding AMSA. Primarily, what is the budget for this program? One thing is for sure, the perception held by many staff members and the public is that AMSA at Johnstone is a major cost at the expense of the taxpayer and 99% of our students that caters to the 1% of our total population. Now, I could be wrong, but the public deserves to see the breakdown of costs for AMSA with justification for things such as why these students neither vary on MacBook and can't use a Chromebook. The public wants to see the figures, hear the justifications, and ultimately wants to see it at the table when discussing all aspects of our students' education. I think more money ought to be spent on uplifting our most vulnerable students. We should be putting in a sensor room in DePaulito or Rossi or Manny's, investing in more special education staff, not cutting four positions on the child study team. Our special education program is incredible. I give so much credit to central administration for our state-of-the-art program. Our special education professionals save this district so much money. We talk about remaining competitive with charter schools and vocational schools, but the cost for spending, for sending a child out of district because we can't meet their educational, social, or developmental needs is astronomical. I believe Mr. Medio has said Vineland needs to reward our successful programs, our winners. And I'm shocked to say, I actually agree with Mr. Medio. We need to be investing in our special education program, rewarding on the professionals who save our district money. In closing, I hope members of the board will discuss how we can support our most vulnerable students before redundantly pouring resources into programs that aid our academically accelerated students. I think regarding AMSA, everything needs to be on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, do I have any old or new business by board members? I hope at this time, board, board member remarks, I'll start to my right. Mr. Fiocchi?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Costa?
I just want to say to all the wonderful teachers that received awards, very well-deserved. Many of them taught my, my own children, and I can vouch that they truly have made a difference in their lives. So I thank them and I thank all the teachers for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pennelli?
I'm so glad the budget is over and that we can get back to focusing on all the wonderful things that our students are doing. I look forward to summer. I am so over that process, and I'm not looking forward to the $8 million next year.
Thank you, Ms. Pennelli. Mr. Medio?
Sorry to burst your bubble, but tomorrow you start on next year's budget. And I'll be bringing up something to board members about that. And it'll make Mr. Martin very happy because it's going to address AMSA, it's going to address Johnstone, it's going to address your basic skills problem. And don't kid yourself, you have a basic skills problem. And I think I can work out something that will be very beneficial to everyone. And we'll see about who's really interested in education, who's really interested in improving the problems we have. When you talk about basic skills, 30 years ago it was called achieve. It hasn't improved our scores one bit. And the help to these students has been marginal in many cases. I think it's time to go outside the box and look at something that'll be beneficial, I believe, to everyone. More to come.
Thank you, Mr. Medio. Mr. Sabrana?
Congratulations to our students who led the flag salute and all the great teachers and others that were honored tonight. We're coming up on the end of the year already, again. And I know that my colleagues and I all try to attend as many events as possible. I humbly beseech the folks in the schools to please keep in touch with the Communications Department and Mrs. Missouri so that we can have a good list of what's happening and when. I know it's important for, for them to see us there whenever possible, especially as we get to the end of the year and we have the eighth-grade graduation ceremonies and also, of course, our graduation. And it would be nice if we could make a list amongst ourselves and have at least one person there to speak on behalf of the board. One other thing, Mr. Olrich, you're definitely preaching to the choir when you talk about having two meetings. I did a little quick research the other day, and I can tell you this, ideal length of a meeting is 45 minutes. And after that, every 10 minutes, you lose 5% or 10% of your, your meeting people, the people in the meeting, their concentration. So not counting our quick session on the budget, we've been here for 2 hours and 25 minutes. So think about that for a second. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Silva?
Not at this time.
Mr. Olrich?
Yeah, I'd like to thank our Teachers of the Year and our paraprofessionals. One of the things that I would like the district to consider regarding to that program is really kind of like a, a simple measure to get the district to put together a short bio, headshot on the teacher, maybe a favorite quote, maybe why they got into teaching, maybe where they got educated. Because I think being recognized is, is by your peers is one of the most rewarding things that can happen. So why shouldn't we promote that even more and put together a separate newsletter that these are the best of the best in 2019? It's not a manpower-intensive task because the form could be sent out to the teachers involved. If they choose not to participate, that would be up to them, obviously. We could list them, but they're biographical information. I think that, you know, the one thing that I agree with is, with Ms. Pennelli is to get down, it's going to be good to get down to the regular board business, but the budget is not done, and the budget period does start again because there is a lot of work. And I want to thank Dr. Guccio and her staff for the tremendous amount of work and the pressure that goes along with trying to deal with a $14 million deficit. And, you know, conversations were occurring with the superintendent right up until the last minute, trying to figure out, can we meet some common ground? And obviously, you saw tonight that some headway was made towards that common ground. But it's not done. And we have a lot of work to do. And the sooner we get to it, the better off we are. And, you know, I too have some proposals I would like to have considered in the next budget period. And our basic skills teachers, I think we're dropping the ball if we do away with them. And we've already reduced them by our vote tonight. But it's, it's the kids that are at risk that are going to present the greatest risk to our school district in the future, not the kids that are excelling and going to go to colleges and universities and scholarships and athletics. It seems like we're doing a pretty, pretty good job in that regard, and those kids are going to thrive. We had a student in Academic Honors Program recently accepted on full scholarship to Harvard University. That's being's going to succeed whether or not we have a, a program that's going to address their needs. So I am going to be constantly reviewing our wants and our absolute needs because they're two different things when we're facing an $8 million shortfall next year. So I, I want to have a year focused on the actual classroom teacher and safety.
Thank you, Mr. Olrich. Dr. Guccio?
I just would like to, once again, congratulate all those who were recognized tonight and thank all of you who put time and effort into this budget. I look forward to moving forward and will begin working on the next budget very soon. But thank you all for all that you input and all that you did. And congratulations to each honorary tonight. We have a lot to be proud of in our district. And sometimes we hear only the negative, but I encourage each of you to remember the many positives that are going on. And I thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Guccio. Kind of a common theme, Ms. Pennelli started with it, with the positives. Captain Olrich, Dr. Guccio, but Mr. Merkley, one of the things he, he's been saying to me as we've been talking over the last few weeks is, why promote the negative when we have so much positive? So I think that's something that we, we need to embrace a little bit more as a board because, man, there is a lot of good things going on. You know, we, we finished with an emergent item for the VHS crew team, that's Nationals. That's big stuff, man. You, you talk about the student going to Harvard, huge stuff. There's so, there's so much. There's so, there's so much to be proud of, and unfortunately, we get bogged down in $14 million, there's nothing positive about that. It's, it smells and breathes negativity, but it's past us, but tomorrow we'll, we'll be looking at 8 million, and maybe there'll be a magical funding, who knows what happens with this crazy state. But I, I do believe that, that positivity is something that we need to work on, which takes me to May 15th, we're having our retreat, which is a step in, a huge step in the, in the right direction for district goals, for superintendent goals, for a lot of things that, that, that drive your passion and your visions, and the only way you know it is by expressing it at that retreat. And I, I definitely said at our last meeting that I expect to see some public for a change, because we've been through plenty of them, and we look at the same nine people, the same administrators, DeMarco comes in there, and we can, you know, but that's pretty much it. So I'm, I'm hoping that we, we see a bigger turnout. I believe we're having it here, but I'm not sure if it's going to be in here, in the conference room, you know, unless there's 100 and some people showing up for it, but I think that's another positive direction that's going to be huge for us as a board as we grow together. And then one thing I do want to address, because I, I have to apologize to my fellow board members, because I took for granted that each of you were aware of what the cost of AMSA was. When that, I think I spoke about it at the last meeting, when it was rolled out, I just, I thought that there was a PowerPoint or something. Since the discussions have happened over the budget in the last few weeks, Dr. Guccio has reached out to me, asking me if she would like, if I would like Mr. Fry to give a presentation. I did not think we could digest any more figures or numbers, but at this point, moving forward, absolutely, I would expect to see some type of a PowerPoint presentation on our agenda for June, because there are a lot of speculation and unanswered things from the public, from the staff members, from the board members, and maybe even from the central administration team, because I think that whole program is growing on the fly, so to speak. But again, my fear with the program is, it's only 1%, as Mr. Martin said, we have 11,000 students that we need to continue to focus on with the same style, passion. So, in our minds, we need to grow everything, not just the AMSA program. We might be pumping the brakes on the AMSA program, it might be capped as big as it can be. We don't know that, because we're trying to build other programs as well. So we don't want to see these AMSA kids absorbed, and then all of a sudden, you try to start an arts academy, an agriculture academy, and the interest isn't there, because they're all there. So I caution us as we make these decisions, and again, it's going to be in conjunction through that committee structure, what we can afford, what we can do curriculum-wise. So I, I'm looking for the positive stuff with ours retreat. We'll continue to do what we do. I thank each one of the, member of the public that's been here several meetings, not just this meeting, because we've worked hard with this budget, central administration has worked hard with this budget, and I too, as Ms. Spinelli said, am relieved for about 12 hours till we get at it again. So with that being said, I thank everyone, my fellow board members, the public, central administration, all the employees. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Four minutes and 33 seconds.